And first thing we'll do is call the roll. Vice Mayor Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Hansen.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
I don't see him. Alderman Potts.
Present.
And Alderman Baggett. I don't see him, and I'm here, so there's the roll call. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. Our usual routine, our speaker cards at that big pole in the middle of the room, and you fill those out, and we're glad to welcome your comments. I have no speaker cards, and I don't see anybody running up, so we'll go to item number one, which is City of Franklin Contract 2022-0284 with Friends of Franklin Parks between the City of Franklin for the office space at Eastern Flank Battlefield Park.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. What's before you is a lease agreement with Friends of Franklin Parks for office space. We've had office space there since 2016. That particular lease expired, and so this is just a new one to bring before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Same footage, same everything?
Yes, sir.
Just another.
Just another lease. Yes, sir.
Item two. Consideration Resolution 2022-74, resolution to create an organizational chart for the Transit Fund.
I think it's actually item two.
Emergency medical first responder services.
Ah, I must have an old. Thank you.
We do that to you.
Yeah.
This is worrisome. Can't remember to turn the microphone on, and I've got the wrong agenda. I don't have the updated, but I have it now, so how about City of Franklin Contract 2022-0191 with Williamson Medical Center for the Coordination of Emergency Medical First Responder Services?
Good afternoon. This is a reoccurring contract that we established between the City of Franklin and our Williamson Medical Center on our medical, or emergency medical response within the city.
Item three. Thank you, Glenn.
Yes, sir.
Which was the one I read just a minute ago, which is organizational chart for the Transit Fund.
All right, so sorry about that. I'm having a little computer issue, but this item relates to an additional position, a part-time position that we're adding to be funded by the Transit Fund. This is the result of a review by Federal Transit of our local transit operation, and the opportunity to have an independent employer, an employee outside of the TMA Group, which is the third party that does the administration and the operations of the local transit system, have a separate contract compliance position that reports directly to the Franklin Transit Board was recommended. This is a part-time position, but it will be hired through the City of Franklin and then work through the city and directly to the Franklin Transit Board. So this provides for that part-time position, this organizational chart change, and this was the primary recommendation from that review, that that would be an improved practice to provide for that additional outside oversight over the transit operation. So this organizational chart establishes that position. We've actually already identified a part-time employee to fill that, and so are ready to move forward, but wanted to put this organizational chart change, put that in place.
Any questions, comments? How about item four? Resolution 2022-75, resolution of the Board of Mayor and Alderman in the City of Franklin adopting budget goals for FY 2023 to '24.
So I will touch base on that one as well. Michael's not with us tonight. He has fallen ill, so I will kind of cover this for you. This is our annual update of budget goals as we head into the budget process and the 2024 fiscal year, which will start that budget process here soon. We establish, certain goals are sort of evergreen. They're in our budget goals every year. They relate to providing a structurally balanced budget, meeting your policies as they relate to, as they relate to the debt policy, the fund balance policies, et cetera. What we've established in this year's goal, this year's goals, there's some specific elements that relate to this fiscal year. They relate to specifically the implementation of the update of the process to update the envisioned Franklin land use plan, so that we provide support for that as we review the first five-plus years of that land use plan and adjustments we need to make for it to reflect our goals and our desire to foster high-quality development, but also be good stewards of both the built and the unbuilt environment, the open spaces that we have. We have also continuing to work to have a strong workforce and to support providing a highly competitive compensation plan, and we've implemented the pay plan this last year, but we are still looking to make sure that we remain strong and highly competitive there as well. My computer's not bringing this up, so there's a couple of goals I need to look at that I can't, that I may be missing. Hopefully, you're seeing it, but this reflects the goals that we have and that we've identified leading into the year. One of the goals we've carried over is related to affordable and workforce housing. We have the Hill Project, which we talked about last week, moving forward with a development agreement with the partnership there that's in place. The Countywide Growth Plan, we expect that to move forward. We talked about that a little bit last week at the Joint Conceptual Workshop, that that will be an element of our work plan heading into next year, is that we expect that process to formally start at the county's initiation. Talked about workforce, talked about our strategies to make sure we are engaging our public. We have our citizen survey underway right now, so that's an element of that. It will be completed in time for the budget process, and then, as I talked about, we want to make sure we're supporting the update of the land use plan and our various other long-term plans that they fit into our operational structure, things like our strategic plan where we have a long list of performance measures. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, comments? Okay, item five. Ordinance 2022-44, an ordinance revising the installation fees for Title 18 chapters, Appendix A, comprehensive fees and penalties, Chapter 18 of the Franklin Municipal Code.
So this, these are items not related to the impact fee that we've talked about, the impact fee structure we've talked about several times, and we did a special work session at the, at the end of last month. This is related to some other installation fees that we would like to update to reflect the cost to provide them, the cost of that service. And so, we had talked about these several presentations ago, but they were not the main feature of that discussion, so we wanted to walk through those with you. Again, this is, this is separate from the impact fees, but there are specific fee, installation fees that have not been updated in some time, and Michelle and Mark will walk through those with you.
Okay, so the installation fees are just...
This presentation was done, actually, in the past couple of days, so we were unable to upload it.
We can put it in.
So we'll get it to you. Apologies, so.
The tables from the presentation are the same.
They're in the, they're in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we understand, understood that it'd probably be easier if we put it up on the screen in this manner to talk through it, so.
So the, the purpose of the installation fees is to recapture the cost that it takes us to install the connection to the system. So whether it be the water or sewer, it's installing the meter, you know, the meter, and then, you know, the associated, the valving that's needed, the tap to our main for both the water and sewer. So we have two different types of fees, one where we have to install a, the meter and the tap, and then one where a tap has already been made, and we just have to install the meter. So this is the first table, and this is, this is showing, so the bold, which is a little harder to, harder to differentiate, is showing the proposed, and the regular font is the existing meter. So you can see, we, we went back, we've had a lot of changes. This covers the labor cost, this covers the equipment cost, and then the material cost. So, you know, there's been cost, cost escalations in all of those categories. We took just average cost and calculated all those up together. The, the three-inch meter and above, so those costs come down significantly, and those are because typically we have the developer install those meters, and we just inspect those. But we inspect the installation before it's covered up. So that's why that's just the administrative cost of us going out there and then of us doing some paperwork to follow up with that. The, so the water, these are the water installation fees. The, the table that's in, the comprehensive, the Appendix A, has these both together. They've been separated out to make it a little bit clearer. The, let's see, this is just that other table, I guess, in a better form, where we talked about the, the installation fees for over two inches as developers installed, and then we just inspect it. So those are significantly reduced. For the sewer installation fees, these are just a, so up to a two-inch sewer is typically the grinder pump and the force main that we would, we would make the tap for, and then the two-to-six inch service is the gravity sewer. So those are separated in between the tap already, so on an interceptor or a gravity main where the tap has been made for that house, we just have to connect it, or where we have to make the tap into a main. The effluent disposal fee is staying the same, and then for the reclaimed water, which is the same, the same system as essentially the water distribution system, those installation fees remain the same as the table you saw before. So we eliminated the GPM on there because the GPM really doesn't equate to how we assess installation fees. It's more based on the meter size. Let's see. Yeah, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, my, again, my apologies. We just pulled this together the last couple of days. What I'll do is get this sent to you all here in a few minutes, so.
This is, this is not a decision for tonight, is it?
It's on both agendas, and it certainly...
So first, thank you for the effort of putting that PowerPoint presentation together, even though it's not in our packet here. Appreciate it because it does read easier in how you assembled it there, so thank you for doing that. Could you take us back to slide three for just a moment, and maybe our audio/video guys will keep, instead of having us as speakers up here, keep the, the slides on the screen for the public to see as we're speaking through this? But, and you may have said this, but could you give us a little bit more history on this? Because we're looking at the bolded, as what's proposed.
Correct.
The non-bolded is existing.
Correct.
Could you take us back to when was the existing rate put into place and how long it's been? Just kind of give us that history and why it's, why we have it increased since then?
So typically, we would update these rates as we would with impact fees, so this has been a long time coming. And there is a provision in our ordinance, which continues to remain in our ordinance. We're not requesting that that get changed, but provides the department the ability to charge the actual expenses. What this does is kind of simplifies what we would anticipate the actual cost to be. So when Water Department goes out and does a complete installation, for example, typically $720 doesn't do it. So there's additional fees added to it based on the time, materials, and that we would expect. There are some that are, you know, they're $750 you could do it. There are others that are more complex. You're going across a road, so you're trenching four or five-foot-deep trench across a paved road. You had to do asphalt repair, backfill, et cetera. So those costs can vary pretty widely. That's why that provision is in the ordinance and will remain in the ordinance, but order management's been relying on that provision to make sure that we can recapture this cost. We think this would give the development community a better idea of what the anticipated cost would be, knowing that specific site conditions could change it. So, does that help?
It partially answers my question. I appreciate the detail. What I was looking for is, has it been 10 years or less?
It's been longer.
Longer. So it may have been 15 years. So we have essentially been operating at a loss then and not covering these costs, or have we been covering that difference between the 720 and what the actual cost of...
So if it's been a pretty simple install, for example, you have water lines that are on the side of the road, and if you have that property also on that same side of the road, it's pretty straightforward to dig down, tap the line, set a meter. If it's on opposite side of the road, the Water Management Department will make that tap. They'll estimate what the actual cost would be and bill the customer to do that. This really kind of, it kind of splits the middle and does what we think would be an average. And really, it's kind of a tool to help estimate what the actual cost would be, simply because specific site conditions can make things vary pretty widely. Does that help? I know that's maybe a little confusing.
It does, but it, I'm also looking, it, will it be one flat rate of 35, 50?
Yes, sir, unless there's some specific site condition that would, that would drive the cost of that, of that up pretty significantly.
And that's really the crux of why I'm asking the question, is if it's been 15 years or greater to present this to those that are going to be paying this fees, this is a significant change from, and I'm just using the three-quarter and five-eighths meter right there. It's significant. If we're looking at the eight-inch meter, you're moving from 13,400 to, actually, excuse me, let me move back down. It was that you said the three-inch, two-inch rate right there. Yeah, so right at your two-inch rate is the difference. So it's just some significant difference right there, and I want to make sure that the public fully understands why, why it's taken us so long to get, get these rates increased.
So this is not, this is not the rate. This is the cost that, that a new connection makes to the system. So right now, if we expend more than this, the ratepayers are absorbing that cost because the new connection is not paying that fee.
Okay.
So this is, this is solely to recapture the, the personnel and the labor and the equipment that we use to recapture the cost for that.
So typically speaking, when you have a new residential development that comes in, the developer comes in, lays the infrastructure in the ground, they'll run a service line out to the house and set a meter box. And our cost associated with setting a meter would be getting in a service truck, employees go out with the cost of a meter, the MXU, which is the transmitter, the total cost of the materials in that case is probably four, $450. We would put it in the ground and walk away. So that's really the, the meter and the meter box only installation. So we're proposing that it goes from 300 to 500. $300 doesn't cover the cost of the material itself. That's why we're proposing to go up to 500. A complete installation, and we'll just use an example of doing infill development on an undeveloped residential lot. So in that instance, you would be looking at digging down onto the main, tapping it with typically a tapping sleeve and valve type thing, running a service line made of copper to an appropriate location in their yard, setting the meter box, setting valving, putting in the meter rig and the, and the transmitter, and taking, and so those costs also include the backfill material, the cost of pavement, and, and of course, the labor and the equipment that's used to do all that. So, yeah, and again, the Water Management Department does seek additional fees if it is a fairly complex installation. So, yeah, so hopefully that provides some more clarification. I just thank you.
Alderman Blanton, then I've got Alderman Berger. And let me ask a question. I know that Alderman did not get all of this presentation as you're presenting, and there may be some anxiety. When we get to the voting meeting, is it possible to...
Just defer it.
Absolutely.
It's just defer. No, just this one.
Just...
I would ask you to deal with the next item, which is the one we spent a lot of time on with the impact fee discussion and what date you might want to make that effective. We spent a lot of time on that. Hopefully, you know, it's up to you if you want to vote on that. But this one, we had covered it a while back, and it sort of got lost in the shuffle, shuffle of the broader issues, but let's just defer it, give you some time to sit with it. It is truly intended to be a cost recovery element, and those costs haven't been updated in 15 years because they weren't updated, they were last updated with the impact fee. So let's give you some time to look at that and just, this would be one we'd like to put into a place once you approve it because it's the cost of doing this work, but let's give you time to look at it and get comfortable with it, and then that can get approved further down the line. So let's just defer it at least to the January 10th meeting and then see where you are from there. It will take three readings because it is a fee, just like the broader impact fee.
Where does the grinder pump enter into this? You mentioned grinder pump.
Let me get to the right slide here. So the, the grinder pump is typically a two-inch service line or less. They're small PVC lines. The installation of that is fairly, or excuse me, the inspection of that is pretty straightforward if it's already been constructed. If we're doing the installation on it, similar to the others, it, it would be cheaper than a larger PVC line, for example, because the material cost is less. But that is captured under here and under the two-inch sewer service line, and then the two-to-six inch sewer service line.
So the grinder pump is between the meter and the, and the residence?
Yeah, well, it's between the public collection system and the house. It is on the, the customer's property.
Property.
And the grinder pump itself is actually purchased and maintained by the customer.
The customer.
Yes, sir. The city doesn't do that work.
Go ahead, Alderman Blanton.
I appreciate the idea of recapturing costs and the cost of doing business, but I feel like I'm getting whiplash from all of the fees that are just rolling out, for good reason, but it's, it is a very big pill to swallow. I would love to see another cell added to this that just kind of shows a percentage of increase. I'm not the mathematician Miss A and S. I mean, I can tell 100% increase and all that, but when we've got people who choose to come to our community to either infill develop one house or develop many, many rooftops, they do their due diligence, or at least I would hope they do, to know what that cost is and forecast that, and this is a humongous jump. And shame on us for waiting 15 years to recapture our expense. I know, kind of like, well, whose side are you on? I mean, I don't know. At this point, I'm just talking through my head, but I think, yes, do we need to make sure that we're doing business correctly and we're not giving things away for free? But to jump from XYZ to the sky in one fell swoop, to me, it, to me, it leaves egg on our face, and it makes us look like we've dropped the ball. So I don't know if it's another incremental situation where we can look at this, much like other things we should be doing incrementally, but this on the heels of the other things that we're fixing to do or talk about. Deferral, absolutely, Eric, and I would go so far as to say we need to consider, we've got two Aldermen here or not here tonight, too, when it comes to the other bigger issue. So I don't know, public hearing after that, queue it up for that. I'm getting ahead of myself, but add a percentage rate increase, Michelle, just so we can see, like, true numbers. I do appreciate how it decreases when I think you bring the developer in to do their own infrastructure. That makes sense to me. But if you take an infill development, that's, that's a hefty charge on top of what I know we're fixing to add as well with the water and sewer impact fees, so.
If I could, one clarification on these types of fees. This is a single fee related to that meter, whereas the impact fee itself may relate to multiple, like, especially commercial development that has so many...
Oh, but the SFUE is a SFUE.
Yeah, let me finish that.
Okay.
So like, a, a commercial development is an, has multiple SFUE, so that, that's going to multiply against that number, whereas this meter number is a one number. It doesn't, it doesn't go up as a function of the number of units. It goes up because there, it goes, it's related to the one meter that is installed for that building, whatever that is. So whatever that size is. So it is, it doesn't have the magnitude of impact the broader impact fee does. Just, just to clarify that that, that isn't a...
If you look at this in a silo.
It's not a per SFUE number in that it would be multiple times in a commercial building or a multifamily or whatever. It's one, it's that one fee because it relates to each meter that's installed, not the equivalency of the demand on the system, which is what the impact fee gets at. This is the work that is completed to put that meter in place.
Heard.
So just, just making sure that's clear.
Okay, Alderman Berger, and then I'll take Alderman Peterson after that.
Brandy said most of the stuff I was going to say about trying to see the percentage that would be helpful. You know, the single fee is related to the meters. What I don't understand is why 15 years? Because when you do something like that, like you said, it's just a big, you know, hit me in the face, and I'm like, wake me up tomorrow. Did that really happen? And so I don't understand why we wait so long. Is there a reason why in 15 years, this has never been really brought to us to incrementally raise these fees? Because we knew these were coming, and it, and it's just a really harsh impact. And I'm with, trying to go back to your comment, which I was going to ask if we can incrementally put this in at some point, so it's not all one time.
So let me address that. We, our typical practice is to try, try to do frequent, small, manageable fee increases in everything we do. You look at how we do have five-year rate plans and water and sewer and all those kind of things. We try to do that with sanitation, those elements. This is a piece that relates directly to development. I think the intent was to kind of link it with the impact fee update. That may have been a mistake, but that was kind of where we were. There have been multiple times we were trying to look at impact fees, and it just didn't come through because of uncertainty and things in the, in the economy. Those kind of things have affected us in bringing that update. Now we're closer to the planning time where we built the expansion that will complete next year at the existing wastewater plant, so we have a number related to that and can assign it to the impact fee, and then we're in the 10-year planning horizon for the second plant. So you're, you're in a place where you have a better fix on those numbers, and you can adjust the impact fees accordingly. That's what we're doing. I think it was a mistake on our part to probably try to link this to the impact fees. We probably should just do this every year, but the sense was it related, they were all development-related, and we kind of moved those together. So that's, that's a mistake, but it's also a reality that it costs the utility, what it costs the utility to provide that service to the development. We can say, go do it yourself, but they're going to pay the same amount, if not more, to get that work done, most likely. So that's part of what you have to assess. I know it goes up, but it is also the cost. So you're subsidizing that cost somehow. So that's just what you need to look at if you want to...
Oh, I agree, and that's what I said.
Look at phasing in or whatever.
Shame on us for not doing that. We do need to pay for the work that we do, and we do need to cover our expenses. We shouldn't be paying for other people's infrastructure.
Yeah, right.
Where, I mean, in installation.
Yeah, that's right. And so that, that's an error on our part in terms of not including that or treating that more like the user fees that we look at pretty diligently across the whole rest of the organization. This sort of got held out and paired with the impact fee, which is probably a mistake, honestly. So that's, that's, we are where we are, and we're glad to take your guidance on how you want to deal with it.
Answer this for me, then. Is there anything saying that we can't incrementally put that in rather than whammo? It's, you know, all at one time? Could we do something this year and then add?
You get to set that policy. You certainly can.
I mean, we can do that.
Yeah, if you would like to...
So maybe we...
Yeah, if you would like to explore that way.
So, maybe we ought to have, maybe we ought to have that discussion, everybody, to find out. Because Brandy, you brought that up, and this is one of my notes, was how do we maybe break that up over maybe two or three years or something and put it in? I don't know. I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but seems to me there would be an opportunity to maybe do that.
We can, we can put together.
Alderman Peterson. Oh, you go ahead. If you go ahead, then I'll get Alderman.
We'd be happy to put together a couple of other options. We have obviously this one and done, and then you mentioned two or three years.
Yeah, just give us something to look at that might be more platable to us for the next year or two to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Alderman Peterson.
Okay. Well, first, first of all, thank you for having this. I had gone back and looked up all these numbers myself, you know, on the, in the municipal code. And so, it really does help to have the current compared to this. And, and some of the things that you've said have also made me understand here that the, that generally, if all we're having to do is, all the city is having to do is just the meter and meter box, that is much different from what you were telling about if it's infill and you have to go all the way from the street up to the house. And now, are we paying for that or are we requiring them, the person that might be doing an infill, to, to build the line up to the house?
So, if it's a larger than two-inch meter, the developer, does that work? And that's why you'll see the, the costs on those installation fees remain at $1,000. Because we're inspecting at that point. Let me get back to that.
Okay.
That's probably the easiest table to look at. It's not, so, so when you get over a two-inch meter, we're merely looking at inspection. And inspections could take multiple trips because some of these large meters, the meter vaults require inspections. There's lengthy construction. So, there's a, there's a cost associated with inspecting. Some of these other infill developments, if you go two inches or less, sometimes there's a coordination effort between the utility and, and the developer. We may do it. It all kind of depends on the situation. But you get on to these smaller meter sizes, yeah, we're, we're doing typically the three-quarter, five-eighths inch installations and one installations. Sometimes the developer can do these large, like the one and a half or two-inch more quickly than we can because they may have it on stock or et cetera.
But the big, the big change there is on the small meters, you know, going from $720 up to, what, $3,500? So, so at the present time, are, is the city paying for the complete installation? And they just have to pay the $720 no matter how much it costs?
So, there's a provision in the books that allows us to recover the actual cost.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, so if it's a.
At this time.
We have the ability to recover.
You have the ability.
Yep. And depending on the situation, we'll see. So, if it's going to be close, if it's a fairly easy install, we're going to go with the $720. If it's something that's more significant, you're crossing the entirety of a road, there is, you know, you're, you're hammering through rock to get there. There's a lot of different, say, conditions that can drive cost, then we'll, we'll recoup. But we, if there is a situation like that, we typically try to do a cost estimate prior to having the work done, just so everyone knows that we're on board. And again, when you get into the ground, anything can happen, and you, so, so that's a.
But now, are you thinking that it will be a cost that much that you have, have shown the?
We think the $3,500 in the example of the three-quarter inch meter is, that would be a more appropriate number on a typical basis. So, yeah, so what you're doing is you're bringing a service truck out, you're trailering out an excavator. You have at least, well, you've got at least a three-person plus crew doing the work. It's going to take a half a day at least to do that type of work. And then you, you essentially estimate that all up and, and add the cost, and that's where you land. So, that, that was done for each of these, including the material cost. Because when you get to these larger meters, a two-inch meter, Michelle, do you have that number handy?
I do. Right, it's right there. It's 1,400.
So, a two-inch meter is about $1,400 to $1,500 right now, just the, buying the meter. Plus, you add the MXU, which is the transmitter. That's another couple hundred dollars to it as well. So, you get these larger meters, they, they're costly. Plus, you need to build a vault for them, which is also a material cost. So, it's, it's not cheap to do these things, the larger you get, so.
Thank you.
Paulman Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification right now is, and I appreciate what Alderman Peterson was asking as well. We're not operating at a loss here. You're able to go and recapture these funds currently, but you're having to do it frequently.
It's a case-by-case basis, and yes, we, we probably do lose money on some of these installs because we don't, you know, it's, if it's close, then we're going to, we're going to base it on, on what the, the installation fees are.
But we're not operating at a full loss.
No, we, these are not.
Incremental.
Yeah, these fees are, they're in there, if we expect the cost to be significantly higher, we're going to, we're going to charge for it. But, you know, it's difficult to say. I mean, even if we reestablish these fees this way, you know, there's going to be some installations that are going to be more cost, significantly more costly than this. And, and that's something we look at, so.
And so, we won't need to amend what's currently in place to support that.
No, that's why we, we would recommend that we wouldn't modify that provision, just to give us the ability to, to do that, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Everybody good? Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
Mark, you pulled out the difference between installation and inspection, that there was a difference of cost. That might be something else that we might want reflected on a expanded view because maybe an installation or inspection only. Because I don't, I don't understand why an inspection would be as costly as an installation that includes the inspection. I got confused when you said, well, sometimes it's just an inspection, and that's different, so.
So, and I apologize.
Are you, you understanding my question?
I think so. So, and I apologize if it's not clear in this table, but, you know, the three-quarter inch and above, there's an asterisk there in the note that said, fee only covers inspection cost.
Ah, now I see it.
And so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's because they're doing the, the developers doing the installation directly, and we're just.
Because it's a bigger, more complicated, so while they're doing their other bells and whistles, they're going to run that.
Okay, correct, exactly.
Thank you.
So, as we look to the voting meeting, when do you think that this would come back to the board if, if they were to defer this tonight?
Here's what I would suggest. Let's, let's bring it to the work session on the 10th of January only. And then have first reading potentially, depending on how that goes, the 24th of January. I just feel like you need a little more time, and I, I think it's on us to show you the breakdown of the cost a little more specifically, so you understand what $3,550 means or $3,600 or whatever those are, especially those more common meters. I think that is only fair. I think that's part of what we did months and months and months ago. But we need to refresh that and update that for you and just have it work session only. So, let's defer that first reading to January 24th for the purposes of the seven o'clock voting meeting.
But it is three readings.
It is still three readings.
Three readings.
Correct.
So, that means that it's sometime in March before this.
Most likely, yeah, yeah.
Could we say something about the sewer? I mean, I think we just talked about this.
But this is separate.
No, 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 but I, oh, maybe.
Yes, sir, installation.
Well, excuse me, maybe, maybe this is, I had this on new number seven, but, but that's, that's actually number, that's a part of, the, the one that's on the, our voting meeting. That's number seven is what, this is item number seven on the voting meeting. But so, but, uh huh, and I, I thought number, oh, number eight, though, has to do with, number eight is going to have to do with.
Eight is the broader impact phase.
The broader impact.
The SFUE-based, demand-based, that we've spoken about extensively.
But now, also, don't we have as a part of this, don't we have something about sewer on here?
There is sewer in here, the sewer installation fees, and they're, they're a little.
They basically stayed the same.
They're a little easier to deal with. When you talk about going from a four-inch PVC to a six-inch PVC, cost differential's very, it's very small. But the labor costs remain the same. We're not putting in transmitters or anything else like that. That's really an effort to recapture the cost of the excavation, the labor, material costs. And those, those numbers were calculated similar to the water installation phase. Does that help? And I think Alderman Barnhill referred to grinder pumps earlier. That's that, typically what you would see in that first line to, up to two-inch line size. You're not going to have a gravity-fed sewer system or sewer service as a two-inch. Those are what you would see in those low-pressure systems.
About item six. Resolution 2022-78, resolution for a third amendment to the City of Franklin amended and restated employee's pension plan dated effective since January 1, 2018 regarding the measuring period for average compensation.
So, we'll walk through this one for you as well. This has been talked through with our pension committee as well, with the unanimous recommendation in favor. And this actually was a request that came from some of our employees, our team members, to look at a modification in the way we calculate that final average compensation. The way the existing plans are written, we've got two different groups of employees in the closed plan based on the averaging. There's folks who are three-year averaging, and the way that's written currently is you average the, the three highest years, calendar years. For the folks from February of 2010 till when we closed the plan at the end of 2016, they are a five-year calendar averaging under the current plan. What we were approached by some employees on was the opportunity to convert that from five calendar years or three calendar years, depending on who you are, to a rolling kind of monthly calculation, meaning three years would convert to 36 months. Five years would convert to 60 months in terms of doing that calculation. We have a phenomenon that happens in part because of that formula where we have a lot of retirements that they end of the calendar year. Like, we're going to have, I don't know, something like 13 this month. And that's because, that's the way it's set up, and it sort of works, yeah, it tends to be about two-thirds or more in a given year that, that retire then. This would provide that flexibility or that option to do it other times in the year and essentially have the same calculation outcome. So, it provides a flexibility. It may operationally provide a little more spreading that out throughout the year as opposed to them all happening around the same time of year. So, that would be positive. We did work this through with our actuary to assess it. The financial impact is really minimal, potentially minimal related to this change. And I don't know, Christine, if you want to talk further about anything else there, but it, it seems to be a reasonable change and something that gives a little flexibility to us and may help with that, that large influx of retirees at the same time of year, so.
Eric did a great job of discussing the, the issue, but certainly, I'll, I'll give a little background that this, this proposal was brought to staff's attention. At least got to my attention by probably early summer. And we have gone to the last two pension committees, employee pension committees, both with this item and the next item for background information and, and discussion, as well as advisement from our actuary, USI, as well as our, our pension counsel, Evans Petrie, and our city attorney. And we, we did, for discussion purposes at the September meeting, kind of laid, laid out these issues for, for this item of changing from it. It would be a plan amendment. That is what the, the resolution is considered by the pension committee for your recommendation. It would amend the, the plan. That, that's what's been drafted. But we did also get the, the calculation from, or the estimate from our actuary. Because as he described it, Kevin Sullivan with USI, it is looking at behavior. And certainly, this would, just gives more, it gives more flexibility potentially, but, and they do work with lots of public pension plans. His estimate is based that currently, historically, about two-thirds of our people do choose to retire at the end of the calendar year, the other third throughout the year. Potentially, one-third of that group at the end of the year may spread that out into different parts of the year. So, that, that's where he came up with, there is a potentially small impact, but, but it is, it is small as, as, as we look at the, the size of the total, total plan. We also would, if, if this is something that this committee or that the full board would consider, we would bring this back to you. On January 10th is a resolution which would amend the plan, and it would become effective upon approval by, by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. So, there would be some, potentially some retirees for calendar year 2023 that could take advantage of this change if they so choose, choose to. And it, and it was recommended by the pension committee formally at their meeting on December the 5th.
Well, I have kind of a, wait, I want, I want you both to be listening. How does one see what the pay is for 12 months that doesn't end? You know, like, if, if they go from January to December, then whenever you send out their tax information and everything, you have that number on there. But what if they decide to retire in June, then you, oh, wait, even better. What if they decide to retire in October, whenever they had been getting a certain amount of money for, for part of that year? And then, you know, that, as I say, that normally, if it's just, it's just a 12, 12-month year thing, then what, what you send out on their tax information has that on it?
On their annual statements.
On your annual statement.
For the active, for active employees, certainly, right now, they do receive a statement of, an estimate of benefits on an annual basis. That is based off of the calendar year because the, that closed plan, the calendar year, the year ending 12/31 is the definition period for that closed plan. So, I don't expect that those annual statements would change because that's what we are actuarially required to do, is produce a 12/31 valuation of the plan. So, what happens right now, certainly, and I, I think this will continue, the actuary does the calculation, valuation of the entire plan. And then once, because we, we have to have that for budget purposes to get ready to fund it appropriately for the next year. And then, once he gets through with that exercise, then he does those annual statements for the individuals based off of the data from, from 12/31. Now, what happens currently is an employee still now can decide to retire in February or, or June. And what, what they do on that closed plan is actually go to our HR department and say, I'm wanting to retire in June or December, whenever it is. And actu, and the actuary has to do a calculation for that individual person. Because it's a, it's a small closed plan. It's not like the state of Tennessee's plan that they can do something, you know, all through a system. So, we do actually work with employees as they get ready to retire to determine what that individual person's benefit's going to be.
Okay, the reason I'm saying that is because as a teacher, you know, our year was based on the school year. Not, you know, from January to December of a year. You, you, you did from the, you know, August to May, you know, was your, was your, was your year.
And TCRS is a fiscal year plan. It's because Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System has the July 1st planned year. And certainly, all, all the school systems, public school teachers in Tennessee are in TCRS. And that is a calendar, is a fiscal year plan. Our closed plan is a, is a calendar, calendar year plan. So, that, the, the dates do, they are meaningful, but they are different for those two plans. And this would be, this would actually be a, still be a calculation prepared by the actuary based on our plan document if, if the board changes that to be the consecutive months rather than full calendar years.
Well, I, I'm not sure it, it actually does that way because I know for us, whenever I get, whenever I would get something from Columbia State, it would be, as I say, when we started in, in August, but it, it would include the summer if we taught summer school. See, so that was really past June 1. And so, but, but that, that, but our contract was for those times. So, that's, that's how I'm wondering how you're going, how that's going to work. But if you're saying that for every person, they're just going to re, recheck it every year.
We'll just have to calculate that.
It's calculated by person once you get ready to retire. And so, we currently have one-third of our people deciding to retire at a time different than the end of the year. than the end of the year. But that the plan document of the calculation goes through the calendar year. If you, if you go out in February, the calculation right now just goes through December 31st of the, of that previous year. Your, your January and February didn't count. You still had three years, but it didn't pick up that last, let's say, two months that you were working here full time.
Alderman Plan.
Um, I've had a few conversations with employees that love this opportunity because for them, say if their 25 years was coming up in 2023 and maybe their anniversary date is May, they would have to wait until December to retire.
Exactly.
And this allows them to go ahead and retire on their anniversary date of whatever. And I may be getting this wrong, but they love having the option of not having to work through the end of the year and, and really knowing that if they're ready to retire 25 years, 25 years is up, peace out. They, they love the new calculation and they think it's a lot more, the ball's in their court to decide when and if they're ready to leave. So I, the only negative I've heard is confusion about the calculation, which I was able to dispel.
The 36 and the 60.
Yeah. But no, I think a lot of the people that are coming up on 25 years love this opportunity. So I, I definitely support it based on the feedback I've gotten.
Well, to be clear, people always have that opportunity. It's just to make the formula, maximize the formula, it pushes you to December. So this, this eliminates that kind of feature of the formula that makes it so, well, of course you're going to do it December. If you want to maximize the formula, you're going to wait till December. This allows you to do that whenever you choose based on that, that rolling 36 or 60 months.
I think for us, it was our three best years. You know what I mean? Our three, our three that we, we made the most money.
Yes.
You know, it might, it might not have included your last year.
Yeah.
But with, with going to the months, you can get your best last months.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's all, that's all, that's all it's, that's all it's doing.
Item seven. A resolution to adopt a policy for amended and restated employees pension plan dated effective January 1, 2018 for post-retirement benefit increases or cost of living adjustments.
So you may remember this is a topic we talked about earlier in the year in the spring. One of the things we wanted to do is revisit that and provide more of a policy guidance for the board to weigh in on so that we have that policy in place going forward. We are stating it as a board resolution, not as a plan amendment, because we want to, I think it would be wise to preserve that flexibility for future boards if they want to modify a formula. But we did want to have a really clear formula to look at. And we did further research looking at other pension funds, best practices within pension funds. And it clearly did show having some level of cap for the inflationary increase was, was wise. It does provide a level of certainty for, for a pension system to plan around. And so we, we dove deeper into that and developed a framework, worked, and then worked that through as Christine referred to with the pension board, talked to them about that early in the fall, I think in September, and got feedback then and then came back to them on December 5th to review it again. And again, the pension committee recommended this policy as well, but ultimately it's the board's decision. So we want to walk this through. Christine and finance team have done some additional research that, that you may find helpful. And then we'd be glad to take any feedback and talk through it with you then. So take it away Christine.
Well, thank you. I promise you, this is a, a short, a briefer version of what the pension committee, even though we do have two pension committee members that are with us tonight, Alderman, Vice Mayor Barnhill is our chairperson and the mayor is also on the pension committee. So they, they heard, heard this back in September and then this, this version, higher level version in earlier this month. But what we, what we did in, with our pension committee was we did quite a, we did a lot of research. We, I call it the modern period, but this pension fund is from 1970, was established in 1971. And the, the laws governing public pensions have changed a lot in the last 50 years. There, there's, there's certainly much more scrutiny over public pensions. Bond ratings are different than they were 50 years ago. And an element of our bond rating is the stability of our pension funds. So this was an interesting exercise to look at what I'll, I just do describe as the, the modern, the last 25 to 30 years of, of our pension. And, and hopefully to give you some, some context for what you may be considering in, in managing the pension going forward. Specifically, we're looking at cost of living increase provisions. And we, we do, of course, as, as a city, we do have two different pension funds. We do have this, the, we're talking primarily about the closed plan, which is a single employer plan, the one established in 1971. As Eric referred to, this is for our employee, our full-time employees who were hired on or before the end of December of 2016. And the, the plan for the, the closed plan, which is the one that the provisions are established by the board of mayor and alderman, has a very broad language regarding cost of living increases for retirees and beneficiaries. It actually allow, it's, it's, it's just very broad. It says that the board may by resolution authorize a cost of living, but it doesn't say how the board is to do that. And it also doesn't say when the board is to do that, but more even how to calculate it, but it, it just allows it. That's something that probably if I have, if I had to assume in the early 70s was probably a pretty common language because broad authority was considered, I'm not an attorney, but broad authority was considered probably better, you know, having it where you had more flexibility. But certainly that's something that when we look at where pension plan, public pensions may be today and how they're regulated, you'll start seeing a difference. We compare that to our, our open plan for our employees that have been hired in the last six years or so, who are members of the state of Tennessee's consolidated retirement system. That, that plan, we're, we're called a political subdivision in that plan, but a cost of living annually is calculated as that annual change in the April Consumer Price Index. And it refers to a certain table in that Consumer Price Index, subject to a maximum rate of 3%. And, and that's what that, that TCRS plan that we are, are in has as, as a policy. And you'll note there's quite a bit of detail to that. It actually says which table is to be used to calculate the change. It also says it's going to happen in July if it, if you're eligible to, to do so and that there's a max rate of 3%. And so that, that's kind of at a high, high level what our cost of living provisions are for both of our plans. Now, on our closed plan, the practice for the last 13 years or so until we got to 2022 was it, it looked and felt very similar to that TCRS cost of living increase. We, rather than the April table, we used March because that gave us, as a, as a smaller employer, that gave us more time to implement if the board approved it. So we looked at March rather than April, but we used that very same table. We came to the board and the board would, had approved a resolution to put that into effect in July, which also looked like, like TCRS. And that worked, even though it was a practice, it wasn't a policy, it worked really well for, for those periods. And then we got to 2022 and certainly we were into a, a period of, of inflation that we had not seen in, in a generation. And so in July, and actually it was late, late spring, because it does take some time to implement, the board of mayor and alderman have provided a COLA increase of four and a half percent, which was implemented in, in July. And, and so certainly we did receive, the staff received feedback that you would like the pension committee to, to work on, on this policy consideration and, and come back to you when there's some, some time to consider some more information. And, and you can, can look at more, more information rather than just looking at a, a deadline of implementing some sort of a, an increase that has been a practice for, for some time in, in July. So we, we began preparing. We went September to our employee convention pension committee. And at that time, we discussed the, the history of the plan. And then we talked with them about a proposal for a potential cost of living policy, gave them time to, to think about it, digest information. We came back on December the 5th to ask for their consideration of this resolution that, that you have seen for discussion purposes tonight. And, and our intention is if we receive feedback, we would bring this to you after, after the new year, but because we know that this is a significant policy consideration. A little bit of the history of the, of this closed plan that I think it's pertinent to what you're, you're considering is the, the modern history of cost of living adjustments that were approved by this board since 19, we were able to pull from 1992 on because it is a resolution. And certainly we, we do have some staff memories from much of this period, but we go back as far as we could. And it, it's interesting that for all of these years, even though that, that, even though the plan is vague and says you may do a cost of living, this board has done a cost of living every year throughout this time, this time period. The, the range, when you, something you can tell that there was a, something that went on in 1992. And certainly we know what happened in 2020, fiscal year 2023 is the four and a half, but between 1993 and 2022, the, the average cost of living increase was a little over 2%. It's like 2.12% during that period. And we do know that there were a couple of those years in which the, the active employees did not receive an increase at that same time, but the board chose to give the, the retirees and beneficiaries an increase. And there were specific reasons. I do know that's happened once since I've been here in the last six years. And the, the thought process was that we, this, the board has been putting aside money in the pension plan every year as required and that there, and certainly the, the actuarial assumptions around this 2%. And so the consideration was that because the board has been so diligent in putting aside monies, that, that they would go ahead and award that cost of living, even though there were some reasons not to do so, maybe uncertainties about revenues on the operating side, but for the active employees. But, but as you can see, that there has been a consistent practice of awarding a, a cost of, of living increase. We also wanted to look at the history of the funded ratio for this plan. And there have, we found good data going back to 1995. And it's a, it's a pretty interesting story just when you look at the chart and then when you know what happened at certain points, it, it can tell even more of the history. But it does show just the sensitivity of how important and all of these potential changes can be to funding and the solvency of a single employer plan. Because certainly legally, once you establish benefits in a pension plan, you can't not take them away. So when additional benefits have been awarded, they, they stay, of course, they stay with you. For those employees who are hired when those changes were made, you can make changes on, when you, when you hire future employees, but, but you can't for people who were there when changes were made in benefits, take tho, take those away. So you can see that certainly at the early part of this history, we were over 100% funded, we were fully funded. And then there was, actually the benefits were, were doubled. So then to 2003, we were down at 56% funded for the plan. That's by far, of course, the, the lowest funded year. And then there's been significant desire, the board has appropriated. There was a, actually one year there, about, almost about eight years ago, the board did put additional funding with a, a bond issue, a pension bond issue into shoring up the pension fund. The last three years, this board has put additional funds at the, at the end of the budget year into the, the closed pension. So there has been a dedication to putting funds in here. Certainly some years, the, the market investments have performed better than others. And we had a, the 91% for this last report. Certainly Eric, Eric, our city administrator hears from me, is I'm very concerned about this current year. As we, we know three quarter, we know where we are at the end of September from where we started the year. And we're actually down 18% in our evaluation just because of what's happened in the market. Now lately, we had a little bit of a rally, but that's a big hole to come out of. So that, that 91%, that, that's something that we'll, we'll see where we are, but I'm, I'm certainly concerned that we'll be, I don't know that we'll be there. I don't, I doubt that we'll be at 91% come 1231. But, so there are factors out of your control as the administrators of, of this fund. But most years, we have been, certainly every year except for one, we've been above 60%. The, the 60% threshold is a state law from 2014 in Tennessee that if you, if your plan is not funded at least 60%, that you cannot give additional benefits unless the state treasurer approves. So that, that was something that wasn't in place before 2014, but it is now. So, but we've had, I believe it's six years, six or seven years that we've been between 60 and 80% in this modern era. And 80% funded is generally, is about general best practice of being well-funded. Certainly we'd love to be 100%, but there are factors that, that make the, the 80% be, be a, considered a best practice for being a well-funded pension plan. And as Eric described, we did a survey of well-funded pension plans concerning their cost of living policies. We started with highly funded state public pension plans. These, these are ones that, and we're very happy that Tennessee is considered one of these. And, and certainly everyone had, I'll start at the highest level, everyone had a cost of living policy. No one did not have a cost of living policy. When you drill down, most of them actually calculated a potential cost of living pretty much the same way we have done in practice. That, that's pretty affirming. One of the top plans does something that kind of makes me cringe, but what Wisconsin's, where they actually consider a cost of living based on, just truly based on the annual performance of that trust, of the trust fund assets, looks kind of as an outlier. I'll call that an outlier, but you do see the pattern that, that looks similar to how we have, have been in practice. And, and they all have a maximum rate. And that was something that, that struck us in, in this survey was the, the maximum, there, there could be some qualifiers of how you got to the maximum, but three and a half was, was pretty much a, a maximum. There was, a few had some, some minimums, but three, three and a half kind of strikes you is what that, that survey shows. We also looked at some of our peer cities that we consider for who we, we consider like us when it comes to maybe some compensation reviews and, and such. And all the cities that we looked at are all part of state plans. So that kind of helped us look over at, at what their provisions are, such as some of the North Carolina cities are all in the North Carolina state plan. They do have the highest maximum cap rate of 4%. However, they do require investment gains in that same year. And, and for a year like this year, that cap won't even probably be an issue because they don't have any investment gains. That's something that you have to look at both sides of how they calculate, what they calculate and then, and as well as the cap. And so we, we certainly, you know, looked at, at these comparables and, and best practices of, of the, of these plans as well and discussed that with our, with our committee. And so what, what we as staff came back and talked about with our committee a couple of times was actually in looking at, at our specific plan is perhaps a, a policy, this is not being proposed as a plan amendment, it's being proposed as a, as a policy for, for board consideration, to, to look at a tiered policy based on the funded, the funded level of the plan because that, that is such a sensitivity to, to keeping this, this fund solvent and for, for benefits, for funds to be available for beneficiaries and retirees many, many years in the future. This plan, we call it closed, but someone after me and probably after my successor is going to be managing this aspect or, you know, for many, many years. So we, it's closed, but it's going to be around a long, long time. We have some, some folks who joined us six and a half, seven years ago that we hope, we hope stay the full years and then they live long, long lives. So this, this is going to be a, a plan that we want to be solvent for a long time. So we looked at three tiers based off of the, the funded ratio, which is determined by the actuary. And, and then the, actually making a policy based on the same calculation of using the, the change in CPI. And also having the three tiers, one being a best practice of 80% or higher, is being well-funded, kind of that middle tier of definitely not considered the lowest tiered by the state, but being between 60 and 79, but then also creating that tier that recognizes that the state of Tennessee has a, has their limitation on any, on benefits to be awarded when, when you're below the 60%. So with that- you're below the 60%. So with that, Mr., if we would, this is the, the presentation that we wanted to, to bring to you.
Questions, comments? Everybody good, ready to move on?
So what we would do is bring this to you as a resolution in January. And so, that would be your policy going forward. You can always revisit it. On the other item, that is a plan amendment. We would ask you to vote on that in January as well. We would make that effective in January. So it would look to January 1st of 2023 to be the effective date on that, so that that covers everybody kind of going forward into the new year. So that's our plan, to bring that to you in January, both of these in those forms.
Let's go to item eight is an update on the pay compression plan.
All right. We're gonna bring Kevin Townsell up for this one, too. So, because his name's on the slide, so he has to be up here. So we're going to take you through a PowerPoint presentation here real quick that summarizes some actions that we are prepared to implement, that help address some compression adjustments that we think are necessary within our, our pay structure. So I'll walk you through this overall. Chris and I may tag team a little bit on some of the descriptions of, of, of how we're, we're planning to move forward. So first of all, as you know, one of the major elements of our current budget, when we adopted it, was to update our compensation and classification plan. We had originally expected to do it as part of the fiscal 21 budget, but the pandemic and all that uncertainty totally upended those plans. And so, and even the following year of fiscal 22, there was still so much uncertainty and a lack of real data to work from. Really, fiscal 23 became the first time we were able to do it. And we worked really comprehensively with HR, with our, our city administration, with finance and budget team, with every department and every department director and our outside consultants to review where we were, and to look at our targets in terms of competitive positions. So from that study, we identified the need to adjust almost 70% of our positions in terms of pay grade. They were not, we didn't deem them in the right pay grade anymore, based on the market value of those positions and our desire to be in the top 25% of every, of every, of every market, market position, to be highly competitive. What that meant to individual employees was almost 80% of our employees were due to have their pay grade adjusted because of that, that same study, that same review. And then we also saw, especially within our lower, lowest pay grades, we completely eliminated pay grades B and C, and condensed those, rolled those into the pay grades largely D and E, to, to more accurately reflect where the market was and our ability to track, retain team members. So here's specifically what we did within that budget. This will be familiar, but it's important to set this context. We adjusted the pay, the pay grades themselves. In two, two efforts, we did 5% in December of 2021, and another 5% in July of 2022. So collectively, a 10% adjustment in the, in the pay grades themselves. Then we also moved the employees who needed to have their pay grades adjusted, to make sure anybody who is below the minimum of those pay grades were making at least the minimum of that pay grade. So especially, if your pay grade moved to pay grades, you, you may be below the minimum. So we made sure you were at the, the minimum of your new pay grade, appropriate pay grade. We also then did a 5% across-the-board adjustment, in part to deal with market pressures, but also to look at inflationary impact. Then we provided what we have typically done in the last seven or eight years, a merit increase based on overall performance and the evaluation scores. And that ranged from a half percent up to 2 and 1/2% of an additional adjustment. And then, for those who did have pay grades adjusted, we provided an additional 3% per grade adjustment. So if it's one grade adjustment, it was an additional 3% adjustment. If you moved two grades, it was a 6% adjustment to, to help move folks a little bit through that, that pay grade. And then finally, this is really driven by inflationary concerns. We provided a $1,000 general salary increase for everybody who's making less than $90,000 in the organization to recognize the impact on inflation to our, especially our, our lower-paid employees, who are often traveling the farthest to work for the City of Franklin. So that was the package that we put in place in July. Felt that was really impactful, did a lot of what we needed to do. To put it in the context of the budget, it was about an $8 million price tag incorporated in our budget this last year. And in a typical year, that number's around a little over 3 million. So it's a significant, it was a significant adjustment, and it was an important one to make. It had some other implications because of the nature of so much change, and especially movement in pay grades, in that we had some compression created. As I said, our target is to stay in the top 25% of those, of those, of the market, when we look at private sector comparable numbers. And then, we have a group of comparable cities that we pull information from. So that's our basis when we set this. But when we moved those pay grades, we did have some situations of compression where essentially, because we had to maybe move you to a new minimum, you might have moved closer to an employee who'd been in that position, that same position, for a longer period of time. And so, we'll show you a, a specific example, and then we'll graphically show you what that means in these next few slides. So this is a fictional example of somebody working as a maintenance worker, the, on the employee A on the left-hand side. They've been with us maybe six years, so they've had the ability to build up within that, that old pay range, that pay range B, to be somewhere around $42,000. So when we did what we just described in July, they were already in the new minimum of, within the, the range of their new pay grade, pay grade D. So there was no additional adjustment required. We implemented the 5%. We implemented their merit. They achieved a 2% adjustment based on their evaluation. We did move their pay grade to pay grade, so they got a 6% adjustment, and then they got the straight $1,000. So they moved from 42 to 49, about a 14% increase, a nice increase. But you take the example of employee B, who is a brand-new employee, who was at about $33,000 when we did the implementation. Their new pay grade minimum is around $42,000, what was it? 42, what? 42, 426. There it is, at the bottom of that. So they needed to move, be moved up $9,000 to get to that new minimum. So they had a substantial increase that their coworker on the left-hand side did not receive because they were already in the, in the pay range. So they got the 5%, they got their merit increase. For the purpose of the comparison, we made the merit the same. The, the pay grade adjustment, and then the $1,000. So they ended up at 49.1, just $100, less than $100 compared to the six-year employee to the one-year employee. Again, this is fictional, but you can see how it happens. So let's show you graphically within a position and a pay grade, what that means. So this is a pay grade I position. And so, two things I want to point out to you. You look at, at this pay range, and you see, I'm going to point at the screen, maybe this is a good one to point at. So you see a pay range that went from about 67 up to 86. What, a 15, $16,000 spread in the old, in the old structure. So we adjusted them up. The midpoint went up significantly, but this flattened. Look how that's, that's flattened out. That went from, that goes to 86 to 95. So only about a $9,000 spread compared to that. The other thing I want to point out to you, really important context for this as well. Probably about seven years ago or so, when we were going through the original establishment and implementation of the updated pay plan, one of the commitments we made to our employees was also the concept of getting them to midpoint by year eight. So if you stay in that position and you develop your competencies, your skills, you've been a, you've been a, a acceptable or above acceptable performer, we ought to get you to that market number. Because the midpoint in each pay range is an approximation of the market value of that job. So we said in, in eight years, if you're performing well, we will get you to midpoint. So that was sort of a, a general commitment. We checked ourselves on that pretty regularly, and we were, we were on target for that. People were getting there or on track to get there, as a general rule. So we want to keep that in mind, too. That became a, something to look at as we looked at compression. So in this example, here's year eight, here's the, the new midpoint, and you see people at eight below it, person at 12 years below it, person that 15 and 14, 15 years below it. So that's another consideration. So let's look at a pay grade H example. This is again, you look at the range, it went from $57,000 all the way up to $72,000. So about a $15,000 spread there between a first-year employee and a 15, 16, well, 14, 15-year employee. So we implemented all the things we did in July of '22, and look how that flattens out. It's now a $6,000 spread from $74,000 up to, what is it? I'm sorry, yeah, 74 up to 80. So, and that's a 15-year employee there. So that just gives you that sense. So we looked at this, we, we sort of blended together the compression issue and the idea of what are we doing to move people to midpoint in an eight-year timeframe in position, not with the city, but in that specific position. So we came up with a calculation. Chris, you may want to help me with this a little bit. But what we did is, we took each pay grade, and we looked at what the value was needed for each year to get to that midpoint in, in eight years. Okay, so what we called an annual factor. And so, the way we typically have done pay increases is it's, it's a 50-50 blend of a general increase, and the second 50% is a performance-based increase. So in this case, we can't go back and revisit the performance-based increase, but we could do the years in position. So we, we, we reduced that annual number to eight years, to that annual factor number, which is essentially half of that. Okay? Does that make sense? Chris?
Okay, so-
When we do the examples, it might make more sense.
So, the city's philosophy is you get to midpoint by year eight. So in order to get to midpoint in year eight, let's take grade D, for example. The minimum is 42, 426. That's the starting pay. The midpoint is 49, 912.
Where are you looking at?
Oh, I have, this is, I have, so yeah. These, these are just the-
We like to follow up.
I got, sorry, sorry. So these are just the min, the midpoints and the minimums for each grade. So for grade D, the difference between the midpoint and the minimum is $7,486. So over an eight-year period of time, if you started at the minimum, you would have to get $7,486 worth of raises to hit the midpoint by year eight. So we divided that by eight, and we got $935. That's what you would need to make every year in a raise to get to midpoint. And then, what Eric said is, half of that 935 is on the city, that's the cost of living. The other half of the 935 would be the merit. So then we divided that in half again, which gives us 467. And we rounded all these, we rounded D to 500 for the annual factor. So each grade is calculated the same way. That's why each grade has a little different annual factor, because the higher you go, the bigger the values, and the bigger the spread. So each grade has an annual factor. And based on that annual factor, we came up with a formula where, for the first three years, your merit and cost of living were already taken care of in the raises in July. Everybody was well above what that, if you gave them one or two, year, year one or two, what they would be at. So in order to be qualified for this formula, you have to have three years of service or more in position, not with the city, but in your current position or grade. So in this example, we have a five-year employee in grade D. They're making $47,000, and your annual factor is 500 because they're grade D. So you take their years of service, which is five, you subtract two, because the first two essentially have already been taken care of. So you get three years' worth of annual factors, multiplied, so three times their annual factors, three times 500, which is $1,500. So they'll get an increase, a salary adjustment of $1,500 on top of their $47,000, $47,000 a year salary.
Wait a minute, you said five minus two. Why was, why was that?
It's because the first two, the first two years are already accounted for with the July one, essentially.
Because we made all those adjustments based on pay grades and the other adjustments.
Another thing is, though-
You took that out.
Yeah, the one, two, three-year people are already past where they, where they normally would be, because of the way that the adjustments were done. So they're already set. So we have to take care of the three through-
All right, so you take that out. Okay.
So for most of these folks, they got at least a 5%, and at least the $1,000. And then they probably got a 3% or a 6% based on how much their pay grade-
They're the ones causing the compression.
So those are well more than what you would get in a typical year. So we tried to, this is for people with three years or more in position.
Got it.
So, if you want to go to the next slide.
Yeah, let's go to that. This is a 10-year example.
Once you hit year eight, we cut the annual factor in half, because what we found is that if we gave an annual factor for 16 years, people would be going straight to top out, which we don't want. We want you to hit midpoint at eight, and then beyond midpoint, it's, it's half again because it's up to the-
Well, kind of philosophically, our job is to get you to the midpoint. That's the market number for, for somebody who's good at their job. And then beyond that, you grow that by your own performance, and how you've gotten additional certifications, or taking lead in the department as a mentor, or whatever. That should be reflected in your perform, more driven by your performance than just a straight allocation. So we didn't want to top out people so quickly, because that's part of why we increased the, the ranges as we did. So we did discount it after, after year eight, a little further, so that we didn't create a top-out problem as well, but deal with, still deal with compression.
And if you, if we had stopped it at year eight, then we would have just created a compression issue with the eight-year people and the 16-year people. They would have got driven up into 12 and 16-year people, and it would have been the same issue. So we had to address it all the way. We just cut it in half after year eight. So in the year, in this example, a 10-year employee, grade F. So you're going to get your three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, which is six. You're going to get six years, the full annual, annual factor. So there, it's a $600, so that's 3,600. And you're going to get year nine and 10 at half. So it would be 10 minus eight would give you two, times half the annual factor, which half of 600 is 300. So it's two times 300. So you would get 3,600 from your first eight, and 600 from your nine and 10. Add them together, it's 4,200 to their salary. Does that make sense?
So let's look at a 20-year, which is a much longer term. This gives you a sense of that, that upper end.
We capped it at 16. So after 16 and beyond, you, the max you're going to get is six times your annual factor, and then eight times half your annual factor. That's for anybody with 16 years or more.
So it ends up essentially being 10 times, 10 times your annual factor.
Anybody that's over 16 years.
Anybody 16 years or larger just gets 16. The way the formula works, it's 10 times your annual factor.
It's 10 times annual factor. That's just the way the formula comes out.
A team of us.
Yes.
Myself.
It works.
Budget and finance, HR, actually working with a couple departments. We were talking through how to do this. And we'll show you the result here. So let's look at this example. This is a, a real position in pay grade I.
So can I just-
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the blue dots are pre-July 1. So the X-axis is the years of service in position, and the Y-axis, is that right? Yeah, is their salary. So you can see a positive correlation between year zero to year 20. As, the longer you've been in position, the more money you make. The orange dots are after July 1 adjustments. So you can see in, in this example, there is, the positive correlation has gone from year zero to year 10. There is no upward mobile, like upward trend of salaries versus years of service in position.
So again, this is, you see how this flattened out? This is about a 16, 17,000-dollar range. This ended up being about a 9,000 or 10,000-dollar range here. So this is the way it was, or way it is now, with those existing orange dots. When we apply the formula, watch the, watch how this changes. Okay, so you see that you've restored that difference in that range. You've also done a really good job of addressing the midpoint by eight. So see, there's that eight line, and that person is at year seven, and they're almost there. Everybody beyond that is above it. We consistently see this when we look at it. So before, year eight, below, a 12-year employee below, a 14 and 15-year employees below. So we fixed the midpoint goal in eight years, and we also restore the difference between somebody who's been here over 20 years, and somebody who's been here, you know, one or two years on the far end. So it, it, it addresses that compression. It puts people on track for the midpoint by eight years. Let me show you that again. So you see how that changes? And that really achieved the goal that we wanted to try to do, which is address compression and also make sure people were on track for that achievement of midpoint by year eight. I know it's complicated. I know it's complicated, but it works. So, and I'll be glad to go back and go over any more details if you'd like, but let's walk through the, the financial impact and the, the, the people impact, if you are, position impact. Through this process, we've reviewed over 700 positions across the organization, and it impacts 385 of our team members in terms of a further adjustment related to compression. Some smaller, some larger, depending on their time and position and how the adjustments affected them with, with, with what we did in July. The financial impact in fiscal '23 with the idea of a, an implementation, the second pay period in January, so it's roughly a half a year, a little, a little bit less, but is in the general fund about a half million dollars, and the water management fund, $100,000, sanitation $40,000, stormwater $25,000. Our existing budget will accommodate these modifications. We've got capacity in there to, to do that. We may need to allocate some of it by department, but there's capacity to absorb that. So, these actions are within your existing budget, your approved budget, and they also are supported or consistent with your approved pay plan. So, there really isn't board action required, but I don't want to do it without your comfort level for us to move forward. The plan right now would be to implement this, the second full pay period in January. That's the pay period that starts January 22nd. And, and so, this would, this would put that in place for folks, really the paycheck they get in February, first paycheck they get in February, but the pay period that starts January 22nd. You know, there are a few other ones and two adjustments that, that are individual positions that department directors are identifying and bringing to me and to HR to review. Quite frankly, that happens from time to time. I, I, I can't give you an exact number, but there's maybe 20 to 30 of those that we are working through individually with department directors that don't necessarily relate to this formula, but are just some inequities, like for example, a supervisor and folks they're supervising making the same amount. We gotta adjust that maybe a little bit, or somebody who's been here a longer time or, or for example, maybe their position got modified, and we want to make sure that we respect the time that they spend in it before we change their position. They didn't necessarily change, but we updated their position or modified it. So, there, there are certain, certain adjustments in that manner that we will also make sort of separately apart from applying this formula. All right, I'm gonna stop there, because I know we gave you a lot, and there's detail here, but it's something we've worked on. We've vetted it with departments, had them spend time with it and look at it. It seems to achieve a lot of what we wanted to in terms of addressing compression. No formula is perfect, so we know we have some other more individual cleanup to do, and we'll work with those, like I referenced, through the balance of this year, or if positions need to be reevaluated, that's typically something we do in the budget process, so that option still remains as well. So, I'll stop there and try to address any other questions.
Alderman, go ahead.
So, so let me ask you, if, if somebody achieves certification or licensing or something, a license for something or a degree, they still get compensated for that as far as raises? And does that come into effect in this?
That doesn't really come into effect here, and, and it really depends on certain positions. We've identified certain certifications, et cetera, that might qualify folks to move position. For example, if some of our inspectors in building and neighborhood services, if they get additional inspection, you know, they get certifications that allow them to do more inspections, they may move from an inspector two to inspector three, and that has pay implications. We, we continue to do that.
Just a designation.
Yeah, someone in our planning staff that gets their AICP certification, or a engineer who gets their PE, they will be able to move, and we still provide for that. It, it, it does not always happen with a degree. That depends. It does provide an opportunity. Of course, the city does provide tuition reimbursement as a way to support that, but in and of itself, it does not generate a pay adjustment, although it does help, tend to help the career path of individuals.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Anything else you want to touch on? Okay.
Go ahead, Alderman Potts, and then we'll go to Alderman Blanton after that.
Thank you, sir. Eric, would you just do us a small favor as we're sitting here? You gave a really good example about a manager that was here, a supervisor that was here, and team members, suddenly they're making the same. I'm just walking back through that scenario regarding from the point that we implemented this to the point that this next full pay period is gonna happen in, at the end of January? On any back pay, things like that? Is that separate, or is that just-
Yeah, we don't plan to do a back pay. We plan to implement this as a go-forward, so from January 22nd on, that, those new rates would be in place, and that would, that would be a go-forward. So, this is something, we had some questions when we implemented it in July. We asked for folks' patience as we kind of thought through this and worked through it. We developed this, we, we've kind of test drove it with each of the departments, and this is, this is what we've come up with. And we'll, we'll be sharing it with them, with our team members. After tonight, we'll start sharing it with our team, because we want to make sure you're comfortable before we start talking to everybody about it.
Thank you.
Alderman, go ahead.
I just want to say bless your heart, because it is, it's always those best intentions that come around and bite you, and I fielded several of those, as you know, Eric. So, when I said who came up with this, it was tongue-in-cheek, but it also was like, oh my gosh, it makes me dizzy. But it is such an important thing when we've got people who are working alongside each other for morale, for respect, for chain of command, for so many different things that we can try, try our best to get this right. And I appreciate the effort. As you said, I mean, you hope it captures a lot of the people that are sideways. I know, and I hope that we will continue to make sure that we get as close to perfect as we possibly can. So, thank you. Don't want your job. Appreciate the effort, and I think it's a really good way to make our people continue to feel like we value them, not only to pay them market comparable salaries, but just to keep everybody in their place that they need to be. So, thank you.
And I'll respond, that's, as far as HR is concerned, you're right. People were very happy with what we did. They always say, Kevin, very happy, but there's some compression. And I think we were very clear when we did this, that we tend to look at that, and this is the look we were talking about doing, and this, I'm very confident this resolves that.
Well, in markets, when we, every, so often when we go through this, it always makes me go, oh my gosh, here we go, here we go. But I, I will say, this is the most proactive solution I've seen in my almost 12 years here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the support and doing what we did in July, and then this next step, I think will be helpful. So, thank you for that.
Item nine is the proposed 2023 calendar of Board of Mayor and Alderman and committee meetings.
Any, this is pretty straightforward. Lanay always does this for us every year.
Here's your proposed meetings for 2023.
Which you won't be here.
And she's out of here, but no. So, it is a, it is a BOMA election year, so we've got one meeting in October, because the second meeting in October coincides with Election Day. So, we won't meet then. One meeting in December, as we always have, and one meeting in July is something we've done probably the last eight, nine years or so to give everybody a little bit of a summer break. So, those are the unusual elements. Otherwise, it reflects our current meeting schedule that we have for committees, that we have for the board on, on second and fourth Tuesdays. I think it has the, the budget and finance as we envision it now. So, we talked that through with budget and finance to provide for all the departmental presentations, and we're recalibrating that a little bit this year based on feedback we got from the board, and also providing, let me just put a quick advertisement in there. One of the things we are gonna do is complete the departmental presentation sooner to the committee, and then ask for some feedback from the committee and from the whole board about the program enhancements. So, kind of what has happened in the past is you see them department by department, and you may give some feedback, oh, I like this, I like that, but we don't give you a chance to step back and say, well, what are my most important ones? Like, what's my top five, for an example? So, we'll give you an opportunity to maybe give us that feedback that kind of helps us. It will be more helpful in terms of the, the budget I present to you as a recommended budget in the first part of May. So, that is a little bit of a tweak, and this budget calendar helps support that.
I just have one question. I see that we don't have CIC on November. May I suggest that we possibly put that in on the 16th, and if we don't need it, then we can take it out?
Yeah, we can definitely add that.
Because sometimes we don't know what the agenda will be. And if it's light and we don't need it, we can take it out, but if the 16th works, we could do it the week before.
Sure, we can definitely do that.
I think we ought to put that back in on, I think we did that last year, we put it on the 16th, or one year we did.
Yeah, because you've got that Thanksgiving, potential Thanksgiving conflict. So, we'll just move it up to the 16th.
There's, yeah. I think we should keep it in there, and then we can always take it out.
And do we get flowers for Valentine's Day?
Yeah, I want to know that, too. And cake.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to make February 14th a very special.
Where are your red?
We'll call Mendel. All right, we'll see you at 7:00.